Amendment by Mr. Gierbaum.
I just want to add calendar, calendar options on discussion.
Let's just bring that up under reports and other announcements if that's all right. Ken, then we'll maintain the motion that's on the floor. It's been properly moved by Dylan, seconded by CEO to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll move on to the presentation portion of our agenda. We have two. First up is the annual environmental commission report. I believe we have our environmental commission chair. Mr. Westlake is in the audience, who's also on the environmental commission, as is Mayor Pro Temp Tahr, and former member, and our former council colleague, Mr. Rhodes is also in the audience this evening. So, we welcome thoughts from any of the three of you gentlemen, and Mr. Tahr.
You need this.
Yes. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Just take a second here.
Take your time.
I have the folder open for you, so, okay. Just, here it was here. Sorry, this chart, that's, there we go. I guess I got it. Maybe it's gone. Is your mouse working here?
Uh, yes, it's very sensitive.
Boy, you are. Yeah, yours is a little bit different than mine.
I need new ones too, because I can't see them. I can't see them running. I can't see close up. I can't see real way. That's what I got. These are my dollars. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for allowing us to do our report tonight for the 2016 activities and into the 2017 activities. Mayor, you did the great introduction here. We have a few members, Bruce and past representative, council representative David Rhodes, Linda's our current representative, and Chase, this quite isn't wanting to go forward here.
I noticed that.
Yeah, it was going.
Come on. Doesn't help. This doesn't go. No. Did you get it from beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
There you go. Okay. So, this is our 2016 report, and going into activities for 2017. Our 2016 members, I chaired the commission last year. Bruce Westlake was our vice chair, city council representative David Rhodes, Delia and Bob Skell. Secretary Connie Dehan had left last year, departed, and Amy Bloom joined our commission. Liz Hillgren, Michael McVeigh, and Luke Smurberg were our council for last year's activity. We're really about community awareness. We represent watersheds, River Raisin and Saline River Greenway Alliance. We do special projects. We make recommendations to city council among some of our responsibilities for the last year and this year. Jumping right into stats and some key activities of the council, our recycler or our trash, our trash hauler is Waste Management. They supply a report to us each year on how we do, and we track it year from year on what we do for both trash pickup, recyclables, and what we have for diversion rate. I think one thing that jumps out to us in 2016 is we had a 19 percent increase in trash pickup, in total trash pickup, which is really, really surprising. It actually surprised me when I saw that number, looking at it in a graph form. And actually, actually, this is a trend that is happening all over the U.S. So, this isn't just us, this isn't just Saline. This mimics a trend. There's a number of logical reasons for that trend. One is the economy's picking up. An awful lot of people are buying new things and are discarding the old things, which really went out in the trash and bumped up all of the pickup across the U.S. We also saw recyclables and the recyclable market go way down. The cost of materials went down, the cost of raw materials went down, so recyclables didn't have a market. They ended up in the landfill. If anybody read the Ann Arbor News a couple of weeks ago, Ann Arbor recyclables admitted most glass went into landfill last year. There was no market. It cost more, it went into toppings and landfill. So, we saw a tremendous amount of weight go into our landfills last year that we didn't have, but we also saw a bump up. The bump up also included residents. We increased residents last year, we had some residential building. There might have been some overflow with the construction, but this represents what's in our residential contract for pickup. So, this doesn't include industries, this doesn't include anything outside that residential pickup. But, I was a little surprised at 19 percent. We double-checked it. Waste Management was nice enough to double-check the numbers. They did so, came back to us, and the number is real, what we saw. We also saw an increase in recyclables as well, so Saline residents are recycling. It's not all bad news. And, the other piece of this is our diversion rate. Last year, we were at 42 percent. This year, we're at 36 percent. Now, we're still some of the best in Michigan, in the state of Michigan. We still have a lot of opportunity out there to recycle. That's part of our job, to communicate, get people to divert rates, make it easy on our citizens, our residents, to recycle. But, almost across the nation, we saw a drop in diversion rate. Even in lead league in California, for the first time since 2010, they saw a drop in their diversion rate as well. So, this is a national trend that we're seeing, and not just unique to Saline. The good thing about this is that, like you said, we're still leading in Michigan, we're still ranked good in Michigan. I don't have a solid number for what Michigan represents or what they average. The number I generally see is about 18 percent. There's a lot of communities in Michigan who do not have curbside pickup. Even western Washington County does not have curbside pickup. People have to use their own initiative and take it to a location to be recycled. So, we have some good things here going in Saline to make it easy on our residents. Even so, they're still, from the peak of 2010, if you look from 2010, they're still at 8 percent reduction in overall pickup, 17 percent reduction in what we send to landfill, 16 percent reduction in yard waste, and increase in recyclables by weight is 26 percent. So, there's still some very good trends there, and again, these are not unique just to Saline. Just for kind of an impact, what do we do as an individual resident of Saline? You can look at this two ways. If you take that whole total amount that we collect curbside, divided by the number of residents, using 8810 as our, as our actual number from census, or if you use a growth rate of about 91, 9100 people, we throw out, on average, 723 pounds per year, per person, and that just is a very astonishing number. So, if you're a family of four, you're almost discarding 3,000 pounds per year, per resident or residential household. So, when you look at that number, there's still lots of opportunity. Also, on this same thing, on recyclables, we're up to 214 pounds per person, per resident of Saline. That's how much you recycle per year. So, again, there's still some, there's still some opportunity. If you look at the best of the best, California is always the best of the best when it comes to environmental issues, for certain reasons, they tax people, and they're at 75 percent. Their goal next year is 75 percent diversion rate. We're sitting at is 36 percent. Lots of opportunity for us. One of the things Michigan is really good at, Saline is also included in that, is recycling of carbonated soft drinks or carbonated beverages. We're at 99 percent. A dime comes for a lot. Taxes come for a lot. Incentives come for a lot to make people recycle. So, what we see is really, really good rates on cans and carbonated soft drinks. So, there is a, there is a message there. If you have to pay, you pay attention. 2016 was our first year of simple recycling. This is a new, as of September 20th, 2015 textiles. This is the green bag you received as a resident. Total, from the very beginning, 31,000 pounds, about 15 tons, 16 tons. We have an average of about 2 tons a month that we pick up just in textiles, textile recycling. So, this is new for the year, it's exciting. We're seeing good participation, we've got to promote this a little bit more. Everything starts out with a bang, and then you've just got to keep selling it, keep people interested, and make sure they're aware that they have another opportunity. This is not in our diversion rate, this is separate from that, the simple recycling. These textiles go to reuse. There are communities, or there are services that can come in, like Goodwill and St. Vincent and Paul, they can come in and look through the items and see if there's anything usable. Simple recycling gives that purpose repurposing. If a camper uses, it generally goes to insulation or backed into some other product. So, it's a nice diversion. 2016, one of our, one of our bigger events is the e-waste collection day. This year, it's going to be on the 29th of April. Last year, we saw 21,000 pounds of e-waste collected, compared to 13,000 pounds the year before, so that's a 7,000, almost 8,000 pound increase. We didn't have, the year before, we had Pioneer that was competing. We also did not collect CRTs. In 2014, we collected 34,000, 14,000 pounds of that was CRTs alone. So, we're about on par with 2014. 2015, 2016, we did not collect CRTs, we will not collect them again in 2017. These are very difficult to recycle, there's charges for it. So, one of the nice things about 2016, Luke Smurberg managed this in 2016, we were able to get this service for no cost to the city. That's something we did in 2014. 15, we had to pay about $800 for this event, but last year, we collected enough for this event, again, was free. So, getting over a certain threshold, that's about 15,000, 16,000 pounds, is a free service to the city and our residents, and makes them easy to recycle their e-waste. So, we're hoping for another good event this year. Last year, we had 223 vehicles, we've been doing account. Electronics are getting smaller, so we want an activity measurement, and about, it was about 96 pounds, I think, per vehicle that was brought in. So, we had really good participation there. We also collect donations to the Fifth Corner. They collected $1,175 last year to help their efforts. We also participate in 2016 Cleanup Day. This is the Washington County Cleanup. There's three events, Novi, Ypsilanti, and Saline. We had a very good event last year. Household waste, it's collected here, 21,000 pounds, another 20,000 pounds of e-waste. This is countywide, so anybody can join this one. We have a service of doing exit surveys to learn about how people learn about the event and make sure we have a better event next year. Again, this is a very good event for our residents to make it easy, to get those hard-to-recycle things recycled. So, household waste, tires, freon-type equipment, and we looked from year to year, again, we had good participation. We saw electronics go up by 10 percent, household waste was pretty flat, but again, 21,000 pounds is a good number. Freon appliances took a little bit of a dip of 40 percent. We're not certain why that is, but again, we're offering that service to get those out of the landfills and get them properly recycled. Total weight was up 5 and 1/2 percent. We had about the same participation in vehicles. And so, again, a good event, it allows our residents to have a good output. The environmental commission also oversees the Red Barrel with the police department, who manages that. Again, we have an increase, 277 to 292 to 302. Not a huge, huge slope, but again, we have people participating to drop off those drugs and medications that go out, keep them out of the system, make sure they dispose it properly, keep them out of the watershed, in the water. We have recycled containers at city halls, the batteries is the biggest one that people use. This fills up, plus a little bit each week. We still have cell phone recycling, about equal to 2015. These go to the armed services, redirected and repurposed from our, from our city entrance, hall entrance here. Second season of Christmas light recycling. Last year, we did 375, this year, 565. This is important, because Christmas lights, a lot of people put things in their curbside collection and say, let somebody else decide. Things like Christmas lights jam up equipment. Those long strings get in the rollers, they jam up the equipment, and it just hurts our efficiency for recycling. These are a great thing to get out of the, out of the recycling stream, separate recycling, and then also just recycle them, keep them out of the landfills. So, we run this seasonally. Lend a Light, LED samples for local businesses is something we've done for years. We've decided to discontinue this, our sunset stage LEDs are available, people understand them now. They don't need samples, and they're quite, quite inexpensive. So, that one will discontinue for 2017. We still want to do more and run education. We run our environmental commission game, recycling game for kids at the Saline Fair. We're going to try to do a little bit more with it this year, but a similar educational event at the fair for the kids, give out little prizes, it's fun, and it gets everybody engaged in a recycling event, educational event. 2016 also saw revival of water markers. We took 100 markers, placed them on storm sewers one Saturday, walked around, glued them on, refreshed them, replaced them, put them on sewers that aren't cast in. Liz Hillgren ran this event and did a great job. So, again, those drains, those storm drains go right into our waterways, there's no filtering, certainly something we want to avoid, and remind residents again. Because of that effort, other efforts like rain gardens, county cleanups, we were recognized a couple of weeks ago by the county, Washington County's water quality. I brought the awards here. So, we received a plaque for our water quality initiatives and a star. They have stars in three areas for recycling watershed, and then also, we're a partner member. So, we received these plaques, which I hope to be prominently displayed here in city hall, and we'll find the location of those with somebody's help here, maybe Todd or Linda, if we can find a nail in the, in the wall to hang those up. So, again, it's, it's nice to be recognized for your efforts and bring attention to the water quality here in Saline locally. 2016 saw our first year of the environmental recognition award. Again, we're trying to bring awareness, recognize the citizens, residents, and businesses who are friendly. We had seven award winners, and of course, you were part of that last year, so you're, I think you're aware of that. We're going to continue that this year, and I used the Saline Be Green recognition. We also do public information, FYI articles. We blog in the Saline posts about local events, local issues in our, in our efforts, and then public service announcements on the Red Barrel, Eastways, Simply Recycling, again, bringing attention to the city. We run a website, Saline Be Green, where all of our information is posted and kept up to date, along with the city website and a Facebook page to hopefully, again, bring awareness. We get quite a few hits on our Facebook page, using the social media as one of the better information sources. So, for 2016, 17, we've got a full commission again. I am again going to run the commission as the chairperson. Luke Smurberg is our new vice chairperson. Linda has joined our commission as our council representative. Bob Skell, who's been on forever, and is a, is really is a joy to work with. Amy Bloom and Chris Shunk kind of share the secretary duties, Amy's the lead person. New member, Tom Devaney, Liz Hillgren for last year, Jessica Uterangarin, I'm not sure I got that right, but it's there in print, and Bruce Westlake are all members this year for our full commission. Changes, Michael McVeigh was elected to the school board, that's why he's left our commission, do better things for the community. Justin and Tom, new members, Linda as our new representative. For 2016, I put on the back our vision map. This is our activities, this is who's going to run the responsibility for each one of the activities. Pretty much the same from last year, a couple of new events. So, we're going to do the e-waste coming up on the 29th, on Saturday. Volunteer Fair last Saturday, information tents at the farmer's market, communication through social media. A little bit of a new thing is a park submission. We met with the park submission, get some joint activities along with Saline Main Street. We lined up a cleanup day, Saline Main Street, so on April 22nd, we'll be out there Saturday with the Main Street Commission and helping clean up some areas. Continue storm drains, rain garden promotion, we want to energize that. We've done that in the past, we want a little more energy, get a little bit of rain gardens going in the city again. The county cleanup, community recognition, want to engage the school systems, we want to energize that and keep that going, and then community, communication, information sharing, and we joined the Michigan Recycling Coalition last year for some other information events, and we're going to continue that effort as well. So, that's our activity for 2016 and going into 2017. Are there any questions?
Dennis, that was very professionally done, and I want to thank you for the presentation. I'm, in particular, I'm very impressed by your vision map. I think that's, that's really well done. So, thank you for your leadership, and please convey our thanks to, to all the members of your, your commission, both the past, those who served in 2016, and those who are currently serving. Are there any questions or comments for our environmental commission chair? Mr. Gierbaum?
Just a couple.
Yes?
Wondering about recycling, you know, you mentioned LED bulbs, whether or not those need to be recycled, and the other thing of fluorescents, because individuals have the fluorescent ones too. How are we handling that in terms of the city? Because I know those really shouldn't go into the trash bins.
They should not, no. They should not go into the trash, they should not, they should stay out of the landfill. So, actually, we don't have an actively managed CFL program or LED program. We do have the big box stores. On our Saline Be Green website, we have alternate recycling areas, so bags, clothing, things that are good, where you can take them here in the city. We want to promote local businesses. So, all of, we have all these alternates, and CFLs, Lowe's, the big box stores, they accept them, and that's what we promote. But, we actually don't have, having mercury here in the city hall, we didn't want that. So, there's a few things that I don't think we should take on as a volunteer group, but we will promote those drop-off points that are nearby. So, we actually don't have somebody in the city. We talked to Ace Hardware, we've talked to some of the local hardware stores, they don't collect them, our nearest is Home Depot and Lowe's.
No, that's great to have that information, because I wasn't exactly sure myself. The last time I dumped some was with Washington County when they did their recycling.
And the newer CFL, by the way, LEDs do not have mercury. The newer CFLs have much lower to no mercury as well, so...
And I noticed one other thing you had on there about microbeads. Are we looking into microfibers? I saw that as a issue that came up recently, too.
We'll take that on. We did have, we did have a communication with the city council to promote a stance on microbeads with the city. We'll take on microfibers, we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Additional questions? Mr. Kittle, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate your service and your leadership and your time this evening.
Thank you.
We are going to transition to our second presentation, which is a report from our police chief, Larry Renick. Chief, do you have a PowerPoint as well?
I do.
Very good. Well, as soon as it's working, the floor is yours.
I can get that back to you. Where's that? This one? Yeah, this mouse is fairly key. Almost there. Come on. Yeah. Thank you. This one? Yeah, this mouse is fairly key. Almost there. Come on. Yeah. Thank you. Well, thank you for this opportunity to brag about our police department, because we have a very fine police department. This year's report is dedicated to Sergeant Weedmeyer. As everybody knows, Sergeant Weedmeyer worked for the police department for 44 years. Unfortunately, back in November of last year, Larry passed away from his struggle with cancer. His wife, Kathy, and children are here, and I would like to present them with a copy of this report. So, if you would come forward, I'd like to give you a copy of the report. Larry was a great addition to our police department, and he will be sorely missed. This is the structure of the police department. As you can see, the police chief, we have three sergeants, one for each shift, and then officers and dispatchers on each of those shifts. Recently, we've been able to have two officers, a sergeant, and a dispatcher on every shift. The current makeup of the police department is we have 21 people total, 14 sworn officers, six dispatchers, and one part-time secretary. As you can see, our profile, we have 12 officers, we have degrees, one with a master, five with bachelor's degrees, and six with associates. And our total police experience is 271 years, for the police experience and seven for our dispatchers. Magic of Christmas, I'm going to go through this really quick, and if I go too fast, just let me know. The Magic of Christmas and Shop With A Hero, we participated in those this year, and those are programs where we provide law enforcement officers to either take children shopping or deliver gifts at Christmas for children who normally wouldn't have a good Christmas. The Big Red Barrel, as you heard just in the Be Green report there, 302.1 pounds of onwitted pills, but I think the, the last number is probably more impressive when you look at it. Almost a million pills have not gone into our waterways and our waste as a result of that Big Red Barrel, which started back in 2012. We are by far within the county the, the biggest recipient of pills. Little Saline, we're the biggest recipient, so that's, that's good that our citizens are using our Big Red Barrel. We participate in Safety Town, which is a summer program for children who are just about to enter school. Officer Ringe teaches that, he does an absolutely marvelous job. This year, he was assisted by Sergeant Bassel when he went on vacation the last day, and Sergeant Bassel actually handled the graduation, so both of them were involved in that. And then Dave is our team teacher. He teaches from first grade through eighth grade in all of our schools and in our middle school, a different curriculum, a little bit different than what Dare used to be. Dare used to be only at the fifth grade level, but team teaches at all levels, which means everybody in the schools gets to see our officer every year, as opposed to just once when they're in the fifth grade. Our foot patrols are a huge success. We started those in the downtown area, they were then expanded two years ago to include our plazas, and then last year, we included our middle school, Liberty, Pleasant Ridge, Woodland Meadows, and Heritage. And as you can see by the number, 1,368 foot patrols is what we performed in 2016. Jay Bassel is in charge of our training, does an absolutely fantastic job with that. Total training for our department last year was 1,410 hours. By the report that you received in your package, you can take a look and see what the individual types of training were, but lots of training last year. We have a significant amount of training once again this year, and it's certainly a good thing to get our, our officers and our dispatchers trained. In addition to that, Sergeant Bassel graduated from the Saline Leadership Institute in 2016, and Sergeant Mag began in September of 2016 and should graduate next month. The police department fleet, we have seven vehicles. We have five that are fully marked with the lights and siren and all the equipment that you see here in each one of them. We have two unmarked vehicles, one that the detective uses and one that I use for administration. The patrol units also, besides what is installed in each one of them or isn't carried in each one of them, the officers will take a patrol bag out, which has the naloxone in, automatic defibrillators, drug testing kits, and cameras that they take out with them each and every day. The police crime statistics, this probably by itself doesn't mean anything, but the packet that you've got explains what's in each one of these groups, but the one that I do want to point out here that's most important is your Group A, and that's your major crimes. And interestingly enough, for the past three years, the Saline Police Department has had a decrease in the major crime group each and every year for the last three years, for a total of 36 percent decrease in our major crimes. That's unheard of. We are so excited that that kind of thing is happening, but I think a lot of that goes to the officers being in the neighborhoods, I think it goes to the officers being in the, in the downtown, in the shopping plazas, and just being very, very visible. So, that's certainly a star for the hard work that our officers are doing. Then I just go through, I just, and we can just run through this very quickly, the different classifications. This is the stuff that we capture off their activity logs, the miles they drive... 2016, and Sergeant Mag began in September of 2016 and should graduate next month. The police department fleet, we have seven vehicles. We have five that are fully marked with the lights and siren and all the equipment that you see here in each one of them. We have two unmarked vehicles, one that the detective uses and one that I use for administration. The patrol units also, besides what is installed in each one of them or isn't carried in each one of them, the officers will take a patrol bag out, which has the naloxone in, automatic defibrillators, drug testing kits, and cameras that they take out with them each and every day. The police crime statistics, this probably by itself doesn't mean anything, but the packet that you've got explains what's in each one of these groups. But the one that I do want to point out here that's most important is your Group A, and that's your major crimes. And interestingly enough, for the past three years, the Celine Police Department has had a decrease in the major crime group each and every year for the last three years for a total of 36 percent decrease in our major crimes. That's unheard of. We are so excited that that kind of thing is happening, but I think a lot of that goes to the officers being in the neighborhoods, I think it goes to the officers being in the, in the downtown, in the shopping plazas, and just being very, very visible. So that's certainly a star for the hard work that our officers are doing. Then I just go through, and we can just run through this very quickly, the different classifications. This is the stuff that we capture off their activity logs, the miles they drive, how much gallons of fuel they use, and then each of the different classifications, how many total hours they spent. As an example, report writing, they spent 1,200 hours report writing. Premises checks, that means checking businesses, checking residences, checking parks, they spent 3,100 hours doing that. Total patrol hours, total time that our officers were out there, 20,173 hours worth of, worth of time. The total activity is on the next page, 69,000 activities, is up slightly from last year by about 5,000. And these are the different categories that we also capture on our daily activity logs. Once again, as you can see, business checks, residential checks, significant portion 13,000 and 25,000. These officers are out there doing their jobs, which is certainly a great thing that they're doing. Calls by the hour, it breaks down, you can see that after about 1:00 in the morning, the calls go way, way down into the, into the low numbers, and then they come right back up. We have officers that during those hours are doing a lot more of their residential checks, checking business doors to make sure that they're, that they're locked, finding open doors for businesses, calling them, letting them know their businesses are open. So that gives us a little bit more opportunity to do those kind of things. And so that's, that's typical for a lot of police departments. About 2:00 in the morning, things start to slow down. And then our dispatch center, this is the total number of 911 calls received. The 10-digit calls is our regular phone number. As you can see, we received almost 10,000 phone calls, and we had 3,300 visitors to our front desk over the course of the year. And then we had 18 people held in our lockup. And here's just some pictures that were taken. Officer Dave, last year, when he received the First Responder of the Year Award from Celine Salutes. Officer Lupai, when he had a tour in the building, and Dispatcher Seams. Andy, when he graduated from School of Staff in Command, when the French students were here. And then the one on the left, on the bottom, Officer King and Officer Detling participated in a push-up contest against other law enforcement officers in the whole county, and we took number one. So I think Mike King did most of them, you ever see the guy's arms, so they're huge. That's my report. I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions. I know that I went through them quickly, but you do have a fuller report in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer anything.
Chief, let me first say, in reference to your last slide, I believe that Detective King can really do some push-ups.
Yes, he can.
He's a hell of an athlete, so congratulate him on that, that distinction. In all seriousness, however, I do want to again acknowledge the Weedmeyer family who is in the audience, in particular Larry's widow Kathy. We do extend our condolences to you, and of course, thank you and your family for allowing us to have Larry as long as we did. He contributed tangibly to this city, but specifically to the police department. And on a personal note, as you know, he was a dear friend of mine, and I have that custom-made flintlock rifle that he sold me that I will treasure till, till the day I die. So a lot of good memories with Larry, and we thank you for being here. Chief, we thank you for your report. Are there questions for Chief Rennick? Ms. Dillon?
Crime mapping, I think we sort of passed over that one. What does that service cost? Do you know offhand?
What does it cost?
Yes.
I think it's roughly around $300 a year.
Okay. And you have to, like, residents have to subscribe?
They have to go online to sign up for it, but it's free to our residents.
Right. I know that you're saying that it's a valuable resource, do you, I have mixed feelings about it, because it doesn't give a lot of information. I think it sometimes makes situations worse when you see things like criminal sexual misconduct at like your neighbor's house. And it could be, it could be a rape, it could be an 18-year-old boy with his 17-year-old girlfriend. I mean, it doesn't give you a lot of information about that, and so I sometimes think it causes panic. And I don't know where people can follow up to get additional information from it. I guess that's where, I just feel like it's sort of, it's a teaser.
Well, certainly, they don't give the exact address, so you wouldn't know whether it was the house to the right of you or to the left of you.
Right.
As far as specifics, that's, that's done intentionally, that it's just the crime that they committed, not necessarily any particulars about that crime. If, if a citizen were so moved by what they read in one of those crime mappings, they certainly could call here and either ask to speak to myself or Detective King, and we would give them as much information as we can, just like we would do with anybody. So if somebody is concerned, they certainly can call. They have found nationwide that knowledge is certainly power when it comes to this kind of stuff, and just knowing where the crimes are in your neighborhood helps you be a better eye and witness, and maybe look for some things that if you know there happens to be a burglary that happened in your neighborhood, that you may, rather than just dismiss a car that drives by, you now call the police and say, hey, there was a white vehicle that drove by, don't know if it means anything, but it gives us an opportunity. And actually, crime rates have gone down as a result of it. So I understand your concerns, and those have been voiced before, but I think the other side of it probably is more beneficial.
Okay. I think if we explain that to residents, they might subscribe and participate in the program a little bit more than if they knew that there could be an upside to it.
Sure.
So. I think that's going to be about it for me. The only thing I was going to suggest is, is this, does this report align with benchmarks and our other report? Or is this, I mean, is there any kind of overlap between this one?
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking.
And the other report, the Hess report, and how that's going to integrate into what transpires with this report?
Are you talking the quarterly, I'm sorry?
Yes, the quarterly reports.
Okay. The quarterly reports are derived out of this, so this is, at least the statistical stuff is derived from the four quarterly reports, and that's how we got the totals. So I'm not sure exactly what, when you're talking about benchmarks and stuff.
Okay, I guess that's what I was just trying to figure out, where these numbers come from exactly, and if that's where they were.
Yes.
They start coming off of that.
Yes. So as a matter of fact, I believe it's next council meeting, you'll be getting the last quarterly report.
Okay.
For 2016, which will be the last quarter of this, of this 2016 annual report.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Additional questions for Chief Rennick? Mr. Gierba?
Just for my own curiosity, what's a Group E-type classification, since we only have one, one year and one this year? Seems like we.
Apparently, it's not a very popular thing.
But it's such, so low down on the group, in the grouping, I just thought it was kind of odd that we would only have one.
Well, and this will explain it, miscellaneous activities.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, what it is, is it's, it's an activity that really doesn't fit anything else, so they had to come up with something, and they call it a miscellaneous activity. And that's what it's derived from, from our reporting software.
Right. No, I just was, it's kind of odd that you just had one in there and it changed.
Right.
I think in terms of what Ms. Dillon was mentioning, I would say that I would like to see some key performance indicators, like a national and a state level, is how we compare to those.
Sure.
Just to understand from a perspective of how safe our community is compared to, say, Decatur or Chelsea or something like that. And I think that would help us understand exactly where we position compared to other communities, and it also helps promote how safe a community we really are.
I have a feeling you're going to be very pleased, because with a drop every year for the last three years, I'm sure we're going to look great.
Great.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Chief Rennick? Chief, we appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but now required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Mulcrone, Library Director at Celine District Library, and I want to say thank you for the proclamation recognizing National Library Week that will take place April 9th to the 15th. And I'd also like to mention a few things about libraries. In this age of the internet, some people think that libraries are becoming obsolete, and that is just not so. Libraries continually transform to offer what the public wants and needs. Libraries join forces to provide many online resources that would otherwise be unaffordable for individuals. There are programs to inform or entertain people of all ages. And you might be surprised to know that you can download movies, music, comic books, and TV shows to your own devices, and yes, you can even check out books at the library. All of these things and more are available for the price of your library card, which, by the way, is free. So I hope you will visit the library in person or through our website and keep an eye out for a fun contest that will be going on in April. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for being here, Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen, we appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments on agenda items?
John Olson, Celine Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to speak for the hotel tonight. You know, I've met with Mark a number of times, and he's kept me up to date on the designs and what's going on, and, and you know, I'm just pleased that they've been so thoughtful to build it to accommodate our community needs. It's one of the reasons he chose the particular brand that he chose is because they gave him more latitude, and they didn't just come in and say, you know, here's your cookie cutter and like it. So he's really worked to make sure that, that, you know, the piece is fit that we need. He actually asked me to put him in contact with a number of our business owners in town to make sure whether we have foreign visitors or, you know, people from other communities coming into our town, that, that the hotel meets their needs. So they're really going out of their way to make, to make sure of that. I guess the bottom line is, I think we're just fortunate to have, you know, local folks who are, are behind this, who are really here to support our community, and, you know, I hope we can, can keep this thing moving forward. And another piece with what Chief was just talking about, it is nice to have the officers wandering around downtown, and they pop into the chamber once in a while just to say hello. And I know the other business owners downtown really appreciate seeing them just popping in and saying hello. It just, you know, gets a connection much closer, and they all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, John, we appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Matt Rockwell, I'm talking about the hotel. I think it's a very wrong thing that our city is putting in right now. It's going to cause havoc with truck drivers and everything after they drive out on 18, 19 hours and everything. I think it's a very, very bad idea that you guys didn't do your research, and it makes me very, very angry that our mayor and all of you guys that sit across here cannot think of something else better than to put something in that, in that place instead of a stupid hotel that we do not need, where Ann Arbor has plenty of them. It very makes me angry.
Mrs. Hess?
Mary Hess, taxpayer. It's regarding, of course, the Celine Hotel design. I had been for all the accolades and the beauties when it was presented, and I will keep it to one word, it's bland, untasteful. And also, while I was in Florida, there's a lot of money that goes into the tax, hotel tax. And I was wondering, when we talk about creative financing, is there any way that some of the tax can be recouped for the city of Celine? The other thing is 1759, the odor control system. I noticed that the tap-in charges are going to be raised, but they will not come, become enforced for, I think, until July. I think that the tap-in charges should be started now to help buy into the system of which we have a lot of money going out. Thank you for your kindness.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional comments on agenda items? No additional comments, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 17-57, Celine Hotel Design Resolution. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution, approving character and quality of the hotel design for the Celine Hotel.
Move to postpone until date certain.
What's the date certain? You have to provide a date certain.
Would have to be after the next Planning Commission's meeting, because of the change that requires Planning Commission review due to the fact that the building is, got an
Assuming that they, okay. How about a motion that Mr. Gierba had postponed till April 17th? Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Is there a second?
One second.
It's been moved by Gierba, seconded by Dillon, to postpone until April the 17th. Actually, because we have a guest here. Mr. Kirkendall, do you care to present the material that you provided to City Council that was enclosed in our packet?
I'd be happy to.
Wonderful, the floor is yours, my friend.
I believe I asked it to be postponed. I think this is inappropriate, because this issue has to be discussed by Planning or ZBA prior to council providing any kind of influence on it.
Well, but that, I mean, if, if the majority of council doesn't want to hear what the petitioner, our guest, has to say, I suppose that's, that's our prerogative. I think that's very poor manners. And what we're voting on this evening is the design and the facade, not the height of the facility. That will have to be considered by the Planning Commission. No one has ever debated or denied that, and that will be an action item for Planning Commission to consider at their next meeting, which I believe is a week from this Wednesday.
Still believe that we have an issue that has to be changed by some other, either ordinance or has to be redesigned, and we're, we're usurping the powers and the abilities of the, of the Planning Commission to do this discussion beforehand. We're basically kind of giving the idea that we're blessing this design with a third floor before we have even the ordinances or the change done.
Well, I suppose you can make that argument. I categorically disagree. What we're approving tonight is the facade and look and character of the facility. Again, no one's debating the fact that a change in ordinance or a variance would have to be approved in order for the petitioner to get a third floor. I guess I would leave it to my colleagues. Would you like to have our guest present on this issue or not? Mr. Seale?
Mr. Kirkendall's taking the time out of his schedule to be here. I would like to at least hear what he has to say and provide him that courtesy.
Okay. Is there any objection to letting Mr. Kirkendall speak?
Yes.
Any additional objection? Mr. Kirkendall, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to show these slides tonight. This is just a follow-up from the first presentation we made, that the first seven or so slides shows the change to the north elevation of the hotel. The remainder of the presentation will show the slides that, or the drawings that we showed at the first presentation of the, the way the hotel would look on the exterior. So I'll just go through these. If you have any questions, please stop, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Jim Heisler is also here to help me explain some of the things that we've come up with so far. So thank you very much again for the opportunity to just present this. I won't take very much time. So the first few slides will show the revisions to the north elevation, and again, will provide a sense of building, massing, and siding. This is the northeast corner from Michigan Avenue. What we've done here, we've added some bay window columns with a sloped roof treatment. This is the, this face is Michigan Avenue, and this is looking from, you know, going west on Michigan Avenue, just in front of Gateway Center. And this slide, it's a similar slide, you can see the, the white building to the right or to the west is the Ace Hardware. It won't look like that, I can assure you. The left side, you can see Gateway Center sticking out there behind the pine trees, so that just shows the position of the hotel between the proposed ace and. So that just shows the position of the hotel between the proposed ACE and Gateway Center. This is looking out across the street from Sage Court. You see the entrance to Sage Court on the bottom of the screen. Another direct view of the north elevation. Another view just further east on Michigan Avenue. And this is traveling east on Michigan Avenue, shows the west elevation and the north side. That's from the street and this is a view from the sidewalk.
Mr. Kirkendall, will there be a sidewalk access from that side of the building? Like, will there be a walk-up to?
The front of the building, the north side, there will be a sidewalk around the hotel, but there's no access. That's an exit door on the north side. The, this side, the west side, there are two entrances, one under the main canopy you see there, guests will drive through there. And then just, if you see the sign, it's not real clear, but you see the sign, that section of the building, just down below, there's a separate entrance for the banquet room.
I was just wondering if it makes sense to have sidewalk access? I mean, if you want a walkable city that you would be able to, without traipsing through your grass, but to walk through-
Oh, yeah, from the main sidewalk.
From the main entrance to the movie theater.
I believe we will have that, yeah. Yeah, it will be able to walk from the hotel up to the sidewalk-
Okay.
-down to the corner to go across to the movie theater.
Okay.
And these drawings and the way the hotel looks, this is certainly not complete. The white areas that you see will be a material called ephesus or system called ephesus or stucco. The lighter brown is stone, the darker brown is brick. And the colors have not been chosen. When the colors are applied to the building, whether it's the stone, the brick, or the ephesus, and also the roof trim will not be white. It will be a very, very attractive building. This is a southwest corner and the pool building is on the south side. That's the south elevation of the hotel. And behind the hotel, you can see one of the buildings of Gateway Center. This is the east side, not complete. The middle section there you see is with a number of windows in a row on the bottom floor is a covered patio that extends off of the bar and the lobby. Going to the left of that will be an outdoor patio that won't be covered, will have lawn furniture out there and umbrellas and a fire pit. And further to the left where the pool building is, will have a sun deck that will probably wrap around to the south side as well. This is a closer view of the main entrance on the west side. And you can see to the left there, that's the entrance to the banquet area. You can access the banquet area from either entrance. Another view of the west elevation. This is about the middle of the parking lot in front of the ACE Hardware. Still another view of the southwest corner. An aerial view from the west showing the ACE Hardware site, the gray area there in the, on the bottom half of the screen, the hotel, then Gateway Center at the top of the screen. And there will be a sidewalk system. You can see the gray around the hotel, that will connect out to the, to the street sidewalk. They're just more of the same here. Are there any questions about any of this?
Any questions for Mr. Kirkendall? Ms. Dylan?
How will your plans change if you're not granted your third story?
Well, it will amount to a very small hotel or a very long hotel. The, it's 63 rooms now, so we'll be taking, you know, about a third of that away. Not quite a third.
I mean, is that a viable option for you?
Not sure. We have not put the pencil to that. We're hoping we'll get the approval. And, you know, if we have to make some major revisions to our business plan to make something work here in Celine, we'll certainly try to do that. But a 45-room hotel would not be what we need here in Celine with the banquet space that we're providing. No, it wouldn't be what I would want to do.
Is there an option for sort of an underground? So I thought originally we talked about it was a two-and-a-half story at one point.
Well, I think maybe with the slope of the land that-
With the slope of the land, with the way that it was graded, I thought at one point we had discussed that.
Would you like to comment?
Yeah. What we have, and that's basically what you have here, is that first one is setting down from the road because the finished floor of the first floor, as you would look walking in the main entrance, is approximately seven feet below the road level. And we always said it'd be three stories at least. And when you're looking at it from the road level, it's going to look like two and a half basically from that, that perspective. And just Mark isn't the one doing the numbers on the building part of it, but it's not feasible, plain and simple. We wasted a whole lot of time and a whole lot of money.
And that's good. Mr. Rockwell, if you interrupt one more time, you're going to be asked to leave.
Thank you very much.
But from that, I'll just lay it right on the line. I would be, we'll run numbers, but I don't think it would be financially feasible just because of the cost of construction, spreading out is a lot more costly than going up. And it's close enough to make it work now. So it's obviously council's decision. They have the land to sell, but I guess I would, as a taxpayer and a citizen of this, I would have appreciated knowing because our plans have not changed if the height is going to be the one that tanks it. So I am very disappointed in that, that all of a sudden we come here and hear that tonight, but that's your preview and we'll have to react accordingly. So, you know, we are here to talk about what we presented the last time, no one said a word. So.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions for Mr. Kirkendall?
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. And I appreciate the statement that the white areas that we're seeing are not the final color. I'm not sure that I caught that during the Planning Commission meeting. I don't feel like I can make an informed decision unless we have a final color scheme with the stucco material that you're using. And also, I think you mentioned some patio decks. I would, I would be interested in seeing that and maybe the sidewalk plan a little bit more clearly outlined, if I could make those requests.
Again, I will refer back to a contract that took almost three months and all this was, was for the sizing and the look of the basic perspective of this building. We understand the Planning Commission with the sidewalks, those are all very legitimate concerning questions as we move on, but not at this point. It's, we're abiding by the contract that the city signed and we're trying to get closure on that before we go spend a whole bunch more money trying to answer some of those questions, which is the normal process. Same thing with where you can put patios, how that's going to lay out, because that all goes into what the building is. So I guess I would, you know, we'll provide what was for that contract and we'll be glad to do that. And yes, those things definitely need to be worked out, but at the Planning Commission level at the appropriate time.
Additional questions? Ms. McClellan?
Are those windows in the front, are those actual windows or are those spout windows?
Some of them are, some of them are not.
Okay. And then the landscaping, that'll all come later as well?
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's all under the Planning Commission and you have, you know, a lot of ordinances and rules that we need to follow and you get to pass judgment on it at that time. Absolutely.
Any additional questions? Mr. Kirkendall, Mr. Heisler, any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Discussion regarding the motion that's on the floor. Mr. Seale?
Call the question.
I'm sorry, what are we calling?
Mr. Girbert wants to eliminate debate and discussion on the motion on the floor.
I believe I asked to postpone it. I thought there was supposed to be a vote on that. There's not usually debate on, according, if I could ask our clerk to do. I understand the issue. The concern is, it's not a violation of our contract if we did not do the right homework or our staff didn't provide the right information.
Well, you know what? Respectfully, I am really sick and really tired of you impugning the judgment and integrity and competence of our staff. I'm really sick of that. You're welcome to disagree on a matter of public policy, but when you habitually impugn their integrity, their judgment and their competency, that crosses the line. And I want to state that for the public record. If there's consensus or I'm-
And I'd like to state for the public record, Mr. Mayor, that I can raise those issues and I'm tired of having issues that are being rushed through this council that are not being brought properly to the attention of our council.
And what issues would those be that are not being properly vetted? I've asked for specifics in the past.
Okay, we'll talk about the waste treatment plant. We did not get the right information on how that played out. We have not gotten the right information on this issue because now we have to discuss how the height was not brought up as a part of the SPA 1 and all the items that would have been a contingency on this. We've seen everything on this plan with a three-story building and yet not a member of our council and a member of our staff have identified this. I identified this at the last city council meeting because I thought there was a concern and now it's brought up. And now I'm being told that I'm being disrespectful because this was not brought up by council?
That's not, that's not-
Brought up by staff?
I'm saying you're being disrespectful when you impugn the integrity and the judgment of staff.
I'm impugning one individual and it's been consistent for the last five years and so I'm not making a discussion point. I brought it up, the roof has been an issue of both of the buildings. We now have a concern with the waste treatment plant and now this item. I don't think this is something that's being discussed. It's not being important or being looked as being a particular person that I'm picking on. It's more of an issue of its consistency and I'm tired seeing this happen because this is a disappointment to our investors because now they have to hold up if we're going to follow the law and follow our ordinances as we're supposed to. But if you feel that that's something you want to overlook because this is something that you want to put on your resume or how you want to see it going forward, then it's up to you to consider that.
And again, the cheap shots, it's just extremely disappointing.
Well, you just did the same thing, Mr. Mayor.
Public policy, in public policy, there are difficult issues and yes, there are problems that pop up from time to time, but there's a big distinction between difficult public policy matters and staff members deliberately hiding or failing to share pertinent information. And that's where I draw the line. There's been a motion or encouragement made to proceed to vote on a motion to postpone approval till April 17th. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands, who voted yes to postpone? Who voted nay? The motion fails. Three in favor, four opposed. Is there now a motion to approve or not approve the resolution approving the character and quality of the hotel design for the Celine Hotel?
So moved.
Moved by Seale. Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion. Mr. Seale?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I don't believe that this vote that we're taking tonight does anything more than generally attest to our approval of the quality, the nature of the quality of the building being proposed. I don't think it in any way, shape or form states that it must be three stories, nor does it in any way, shape or form usurp the authority, I believe, of the Planning Commission or those other steps that must be followed in the normal process of having a building like this come to fruition.
Thank you, sir. Additional discussion? Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Seale. I do, this will come back to us for final approval, is that correct? At once Planning Commission has approved all of the regular process pieces? I feel like we're going backwards on the process and I know that's how the contract is laid out, but I'm hopeful that it will still go back through the regular process of Planning Commission approval and then come to us for final approval.
Yeah, I think there's no, I can't remember if there's a special land use involved, but otherwise it's what I would call stray zoning with SPA 1 as opposed to a PUD, a planned unit development. With a planned unit development, of course, and you have that a little bit further down the line on the agenda, with the 600 maple property, the PUD does require ultimate approval by the council at the preliminary site plan as well as the final site plan. But with this, it would go through, so this is a non-typical, as far as the council having to approve the design, the general design of the building, of the hotel. However, it is part, because it's part of the agreement Mr. Heisler had alluded to, talking about the general design and that it would be similar or same to what they proposed, I believe, back in July maybe, I can't remember, I apologize, they take. But this is just a general review. So I don't believe, unless there's a, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, well, certainly an ordinance change, yes. I mean, if the ordinance, the ordinance change comes, then yes, but as far as specific to the design overall design-
Not specific design, but I'm talking about whether there's a third story or not, that still has to go through Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, yes. So that ordinance, yes.
And then it has to come down?
So council would have this, would have the final council, be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council for, rather not to approve a amendment to the ordinance to allow for a third story.
Mr. Ruben, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, a couple of things have to occur before it actually comes back to council. One is the preliminary site plan would go with Planning Commission, they would review it for the full extent of a preliminary site plan. Whether it comes in as a PUD or as a standard site plan is really not confirmed at this point. There is a possibility they would come in not as a PUD, but as a standard site plan. Zippy just went through this. They originally thought PUD, but PUD methodology and process is very difficult and is very time-consuming. So they feel they can accomplish basically what they need, as Zippy did, by coming through as a standard site plan. First step for this, when they submit the preliminary site plan, we'll go to the covenants committee, South Trail Business Park Covenants Committee, because it's Lot 18. And so when we do get a preliminary site plan, then we'll have the information to look at things like the height, the block coverage and all those, you know, bulk requirements as well as use requirements. So they'll have to do some rigorous planning work, submittals, review responses, et cetera, and go through a public hearing before it actually gets close to getting a preliminary site plan approval per the sales agreement.
Thank you.
And just curious, for history's sake, why that process didn't happen prior to this? I know, I mean, I was here, but I just wanted, for the public's sake.
They have to have permission to actually submit a site plan, which is what they're trying to do now by getting some preliminary approvals from the City Council. So at some point when they get enough directive or go-ahead, then they will probably finish up the site due diligence and submit a preliminary site plan. At this point, we've only wanted to sort of a concept plan review.
Thank you. Thank you.
Additional comments? Let me make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak first, Mr. Seale. Ms. Dylan?
So then by us voting, we are giving our preliminary okay to a third story on this building, is what you're saying?
No, no. There's no site plan to give a review on to say, yes, it's three stories.
But we've already now reviewed the initial drawings, is what I'm saying, though. And so when it goes back, we're looking at things that are showing us elevations and that they're showing a third story on this building.
I think as-
I don't want it to be construed as though we're approving and stepping on planning.
Right. Well, you can, it can be a condition to your motion now that, you know, sure, this is for appearance standards, basically. And so you could say, well, okay, appearance standards, it looks acceptable, you know, pending the final agreement, except for, you know, we know that looking at the appearance standards, given approval, doesn't approve anything on a site plan, you know, location of utilities, number of parking spaces, height, that's just one of a multitude of standards. You're not compromising one standard or any standard by looking at the appearances.
Mr. Seale?
One of the very conditions that this council placed on this proposal from the outset was that it be of at least the nature and character of a Best Western Plus or better. And I think that they're here to satisfy us that they've met that requirement. We're not here to approve tonight the- not here to approve tonight the size or the shape of the building, but rather the character of the building.
Right, right. And as Mr. Gierba stated, you know, when it gets to the Planning Commission, basically, it can't have three stories unless it has three stories with a request that they get a variance, if they put in a variance request, or some other means that would allow three stories. So it's up to them to show what steps they want to take for the third story. And so until they take that step, we don't know what will transpire. Except when it shows up at the Planning Commission, then the question will be asked.
Additional discussion. Ms. Mitchell.
I would just like to state that I feel uncomfortable with understanding where we are in this process and what happens afterwards, and whether or not, there was a lot of language, but whether or not the plan is coming back before us. I'm conscious that I do not want to step on the Planning Commission's toes. I feel like some of this discussion we're having tonight is generated by the lack of having their input before this discussion. I want to be able to vote with confidence and fully informed. I don't feel like I can do that. So I could abstain. I could have it explained one more time, perhaps, about the process of what's happening tonight and where it's going and whether it's coming back.
Let me try to explain that.
Yeah.
So per the tentative contract that we entered into with Mr. Kirkendall and his team, there was a stipulation, a clause, that requires city council to sign off and/or approve on the overall feel and character of the facility, hoping that it is keeping with some renderings that Mr. Kirkendall showed us very early on in this process, okay? That is, as Mr. Rubel has stated, I think as Mr. Campbell has tried to state, that's all we're doing tonight, is the general look and feel and character of the facility. Some of the issues that you brought up about landscaping and building materials, those are perfectly appropriate, reasonable questions that will be considered and debated by the Planning Commission-
Okay.
-during the initial and then final site plan approval process. Now, the issue of either granting a variance or what this petitioner is going to pursue, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to permit a third story, first has to be considered, discussed, and debated by the Planning Commission.
Okay.
I believe that that is a perfectly innocuous proposal and request. I suspect if I had to put on my hat as a bean counter and a prognosticator, that probably will be approved. Subsequent to that, it will come back to city council for debate consideration and hopefully adoption.
Just a point, one point of clarification on the appearance standards, is that when the site plan goes to the South Trail Covenants Committee, the South Trail Covenants restrictions do have appearance standards within those rules and regulations, which are pretty stringent. That's why some of the factories look so nice out there in South Trail Business Park. So they do have glass, brick, certain, you know, amount of composition required of certain quality materials. That recommendation, then, or assurance, will go from the Covenants Committee to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, then, you know, it's up to them if they want to add or subtract from that. Maybe they can't subtract from it, but they transmit them standards for appearance that would go along with the recommendation to the Planning Commission from the Covenants Committee.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Ms. Tarr.
Yes. So would I be correct, in my opinion, that we have brought this upon ourselves in a way by adding a step into the process of requiring this approval when we set up the agreement to sell the property? I believe this is not a normal step in the process. We added it in because we wanted to have, we wanted to have a look ahead of time, that look and feel, and that's what we're doing now, and that nothing about this process subverts or overrules any of our normal required and excellent processes.
No, no, not in my opinion. What I would state is that, as the deed holder of the property, it's perfectly reasonable and appropriate and legal to put that type of stipulation on the sales agreement. Again, as was stated to the petitioner very early on, we are looking for a boutique hotel, a quality product, not just the run-of-the-mill facility you find on any exit off of an expressway. So yes, it is an additional step that we added, but it in no way subverts the normal process.
Okay, good. Yes, I was not suggesting we shouldn't have done it. I'm just saying, I was just suggesting that we have, we are the ones who added this step into the normal process.
Correct. Additional discussion.
Thank you.
Well, let me just say one thing. I, obviously, as the mover of the motion, I'm very much in favor of moving forward. What was presented tonight was not a surprise to anyone. It's in keeping with what Mr. Kirkendall and his team has shared all along, in particular, what you shared at our last meeting just two weeks ago. And I do think it's a high-quality product. I think getting a boutique hotel in our community is of vital interest. It's been something that's been discussed and advocated for, for quite some time. And as was stated by our chamber director, having gentlemen involved who are local, who are invested in the community, is a plus, is an added bonus. And so we're not only talking about creating a hotel and providing a need that has existed in this community for some time, we're also talking about adding jobs and adding a parcel to the tax rolls, which has been city-owned for decades. So there are numerous benefits to moving this forward. And again, I want to state emphatically, this in no way usurps, excuse me, the normal process. The change to the zoning ordinance has to go through Planning Commission. If they respond favorably, it will come back to city council. This whole project, the design, the implementation, will be considered, debated, hopefully robustly, by the Planning Commission at both the preliminary, at both the preliminary site plan level and then subsequently at the final site plan. So again, all we're considering tonight is the general look and the feel of this facility. I think it's good. Gentlemen, I appreciate your patience. We want to see this come to fruition, or certainly I do, and I'm glad to be the second to the motion and to encourage you and help you in any way I can to keep this ball moving forward, because I think it's really important for this community. Is there any subsequent discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Marle to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Is that two nays? The ayes have it, and the motion carries five to two. Thank you, gentlemen. We proceed now to new business item 17-58. This is purchase of road salt for 2017-2018 winter season. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 28, 2017 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of road salt through the State of Michigan M-Deal Program for 2017-2018 winter season in the amount not to exceed 30,000.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Gierba to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Don't believe Mr. Fordice is in the audience this evening, so Mr. Campbell, you take your lead on this?
I am. So as you, as some of you may recall, in past years, the city has a long history of participating in the state bid. The only caveat is that they need us to, we need to make an order before we know what the price is. And so, but it has typically worked out in the city's favor. There was a few years ago, again, because it is a, road salt is a commodity, of course, it fluctuates with the market. And so a few years ago, when we had those two back-to-back, very hard, long, cold winters, used a lot of salt, and it, they, I would, they gouged us in a bad way. But we don't believe that's the case now. As you can see from Jeff's, Mr. Fordice's memo, it's much more reasonable than we, so this last year, for the 2016-2017 winter, we purchased approximately 340 tons, and that's, that's both the, our early delivery as well as portion, I believe we have to commit to 70% of our seasonal backup. So we're looking at only needing to purchase approximately 300 tons this coming year for the 2017-2018 year. And as Mr. Fordice also puts in his memo, the last winter delivery price was $39.46 per, $39.46 cents per ton, and he's anticipating a similar price for the 2017-18 purchase.
Questions for City Manager Campbell. Ms. Dillon.
Do we have, like, two holding bins? Like, one for current and then one for the new? So they just keep adding the new to the old?
Right, we mix, yeah, we mix it up, but yes, it's utilized, stored in the same bin, yes.
Okay. There's no issue with that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gierba, seconded by Tahr to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-59. This is SRF loan for wastewater treatment plant odor control system. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 28, 2017 memo from Brian Rubel of Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the proposal to move forward with the state revolving fund SRF low-interest loan application.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Well, we got to deal with this again. Mr. Brian Rubel and Mr. Gary Rubel, we would welcome you to the podium. And first, let me say on behalf of city council, since we just discussed this at a recent work meeting, we're very appreciative that you got the ball rolling and moved on this very quickly. Who would like to begin? Brian, you want to start?
As you can see in Mr. Rubel's memo, he did mention the direction we received at the last work meeting with WEA.
I think it'll become obvious why I moved quickly, because it really does require, the application requires to be done very quickly to meet a standing deadline. So the application's actually more than just filling out a couple of pages, it's actually writing a report describing the project, its impact on the environment, the impact on rates. This is an example of one we did in the past, so it's a fairly lengthy document. We have a head start on it. We have the Webster Report, which will go into it. We can utilize information from our past submittals, so that will help. We have, we do have to do a rate calculation to share it with your residents, what the impact of the odor control would be on the rates. We have to have a public hearing, which we'll go through, and we'll participate in that with you. There'll also be an opportunity to ask for principal forgiveness, which is sort of a grant. If there are positive environmental impacts on the project, we'll prepare a justification on behalf of the city and hopefully get some funding that will reduce the cost. We've been successful in that in the past, and we'll give that our best shot as well. I also included in here some field visits. I think we talked about that briefly. Some, some where all of us may wish to actually see this technology at some wastewater plants, and so we included some time to organize that and lead that. So the schedule is a big deal here. Usually, these take a few months to complete. In fact, I'm finishing a couple of them this week. So literally, I do need to start tomorrow. I've got a, my team penciled in to start tomorrow, should you ask me to proceed tonight. So we need to, we need to have this done in April, so that we can advertise for the public hearing. And we'd have the public hearing in June, then, to meet, to beat our July date. I'm optimistic that this will go more efficiently than I had budgeted, so that will be my goal to deliver to you.
Excellent.
So with that, that's all I had to review.
Gary, do you have any additional comments? No? Okay, let's open it up for questions. Questions for either Mr. Brian Rubel or Mr. Gary Rubel. Mr. CEO.
So, Mr. Brian Rubel, all that at a cost of only 24,800. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, or lower.
Or lower.
I hope it's lower.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
24,000.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I'd just like to make that motion to add the 24, not to exceed 24,800 in the-
To acknowledge receipt of the March 28, 2017 memo from Brian Rubel of Tetra Tech, and to approve or not to approve the proposal to move forward with the state revolving loan fund, loan application at a not-to-exceed amount. Read the number for me, Mr. Gierba.
24,800?
24,800.
$1,800.
Yep. Mr. CEO, do you have any objection to that being added? Ms. Mitchell, I hope you don't object to that. Okay, very good. That verbiage will be added then, without objection. Thank you, Mr. Gierba. Additional questions for these gentlemen? No? Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? They'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved, of course, noting the new language offered by Mr. Gierba. It's been moved by CEO, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-60. This is Maple Oaks PUD. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March 30, 2017 memo from Chris Atkins of Carlisle-Wartman, and the March 23, 2017 memo from Planning Commission Secretary Gray, and to approve or not to approve the preliminary PUD for Maple Oaks.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Councilwoman McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tahr. Well, we have our city engineer here to speak to this issue, as well as the applicant. Mr. Rubel, would you like to begin? And then, gentlemen, we would welcome you to the podium to make an additional comment, if that's your wish. We appreciate you both being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we've had numerous work meetings with city council. We've also conducted the preliminary PUD review and hearing with the Planning Commission. And so they, they reviewed the site plan. It was postponed once, it came back. So they would get clarification on the waivers. And in that process involved, in that trip, or in that journey, Planning Commission and council met jointly in a work meeting. So there would be some common understanding and common feedback. So we've sort of reached that point where, and I talked to Doug Lawan this afternoon, although he couldn't be here, and Chris Atkins is on vacation, they expressed some certainties here, is that, one, they're comfortable with the waivers the way they're requested and the way they've been addressed. On the preliminary site plan, we'll get further explanation on the final site plan. So, and then another certainty is that they feel that even if by approving the preliminary site plan does not give full approval of waivers, because the final site plan carries the details of how those would be fulfilled. So even though right now you're giving a nod to the waivers, basically, it's pending the final site plan review by, or PUD plan review by the Planning Commission, then it'll come back to council again for approval of the final site plan. So this is sort of like just a preliminary round, and then you'll be involved with the final round. Now, another certainty, and I talked to Doug about this later today, we've come to an understanding that because the project has three condominiums in it and a master condominium over those three, so we are now, with that condominium lots, we are under the ordinance provision for condominium development agreement, and we'll get to review the master deal bylaws, because the three have to mesh. The plan, the PUD plan, the condominium plan, the master deal and bylaws all have to blend, because there are three entities or three dedications to the city, the streets, water main, sanitary sewer. So those usually are well-described and regulated by the development agreement. So we have to accomplish those things before it comes back to Planning Commission, well, I mean, the basis for those, before it comes back to city council. The condominium agreement in full is built off of the approval of the final PUD, once again, city council. Then the development agreement will come back. So you will see it twice more, at least twice more.
Very good. Before I entertain, questions for Mr. Rubel. Gentlemen, again, we appreciate you being here this evening. Do you have any comments for us?
Name is Bruce Michael. I'm with the Maple Oaks Development Team. Really, I'm not here to take a long time and describe a bunch of stuff. I'm really here to answer any questions you might have. If there's, if you want a full description of the project, we can do that for you, but I believe you probably already know a lot about it, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Why don't you do, if you wouldn't mind, if my council colleagues would indulge me, why don't you give us the two-minute overview of the project, just for the benefit of the press that's in the audience this evening and those who may be watching at home? Because it's actually quite exciting.
The question is whether or not I can keep it to two minutes.
Challenge yourself.
The property that we've, the project we've been, we've taken on is a really unusual project. We've been amazingly satisfied with the response that the market has given to us, and that this project will be what I consider probably one of the most integrated projects that I've ever been involved in, in that the project's designed to accommodate adults with developmental disabilities. And we have a wide variety of, it's 15 now?
We have 15 reservations. We clearly hate for people who have families that have developed children-
We have fifteen reservations. We clearly hate for people who have families that have children with developmental disabilities.
And what's most interesting is that we found that there's not been any market resistance by people who don't have this condition, also living in the same community, which is really very cool. I mean, for that to have happened. So, we've gone through and devised product that will meet kind of all these different needs. We've got single-family for people that don't necessarily have a developmental disability. In some cases, they're actually family members of the adult child they have who has that condition. We have some more middle-class product that we would call our duplexes for people that want to be somewhere between the condominiums and the single-family. And then, the condominiums themselves, which are designed specifically for those people that suffer with the developmental disability condition. And we've had to deal with a great number of issues that arise at this particular site. It's past use, some relatively minor environmental contamination, the fact that there's a lot of buried peat underneath the ground, an odd shape, some wetlands, and some railroad tracks. So, it's been an interesting challenge. And I have to commend your staff, your consultants, and your Planning Commission for being able to wrap their arms around a fairly complex project because we've tried to integrate these three different products into one fairly small site. So, as you can see in the plans that you've had before you, it's cul-de-sac. And we've really integrated all three different product types on that one road. Tried to cluster them together as much as we can, so it kind of makes sense. But again, it's truly an integrated community. And with that, that's... I think that's...
That was pretty good.
Probably a hundred-and-twenty seconds.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Well, again, I want to thank you, and Bill, I want to thank you for being here this evening and for your patience and your due diligence throughout this process. I'm going to stand behind the statement I made at the Planning Commission meeting last week. But I do want to state just one more time for the record. As I look to my left at the visuals of what you're proposing, of course, they look great. And the polarity between what we are going to expect and what used to be there, I mean, the gulf couldn't be more extreme. So, this is a really positive development, again, meets the needs of a constituency, a demographic in our community that's often left out and left behind. So, you know, really, really excited about this and glad that we're, you know, moving the ball forward again. Mr. Rubel, thank you for your comments. Are there questions for either staff or the applicant? I should also note for the public record, appreciate your comments about the Planning Commission and our work on the PUD. Tried to be very thoughtful and deliberate because it was the first time we were doing it, and this is a multi-dimensional project. I say that with the greatest amount of respect. And many of my council colleagues actually participated in that meeting. I know some of you had some scheduling conflicts, but I thought it was a good meeting, a good discussion. And I would assume that Mr. Gearbaugh shares that sentiment as the Planning Commission rep. But we're happy to entertain any questions, comments you may have. Let's start with Ms. McClellan and then go to Mr. Gearbaugh.
No questions. I just wanted to, again, just express my appreciation for the thoughtfulness that you guys have put into this, the integration, all the organization. The joint meeting was very helpful for me in trying to read through all the information. And then, just again, for what you're bringing to the community. I think it's fabulous. I'm so excited. I have some friends that are really excited about the project and thinking about moving in. So, just very, very excited and looking forward to this project coming to completion.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I appreciate everything because this has taken... I'm not sure, Mr. Campbell may know, but we started negotiations on this property almost three years ago?
A long time ago.
Two and a half or three years ago.
Wow.
And the ability to negotiate back and forth and your way and your approach that this will benefit both the city, not only in its fiscal aspect, but also basically from its social aspect and its ability to provide for our citizens. I think the thing that I felt so impressed about this was the actual working with our consultant in the PUD and how we actually got this to come together. There are some uniquenesses about this property that the PUD clearly made this a developable piece of property. Had it not been for some of the things that we are mixing in this property, you could have built two large apartment buildings with forty-four apartments by right. But in this case, we're coming up with something that looks better, something that's a little mixture and the whole thing that you've already presented. And so, I think that's the reason why Planning Commission really supported this and really felt this was a great way to develop this property. There is one thing with the PUD that we probably want to look at, and there was a requirement, and I think this was because most developments look at large pieces of property, like a hundred acres or more, that there's a requirement of forty percent open space. Well, when we look at... and I raise this point. When we raised the issue about developing smaller plots of land within the city, setting aside forty percent of that property for open space is just going to be almost impossible. So, there may be some steps that we need to put in there and revisit with our PUD to maybe reduce it because even in this situation, the idea of open spaces, more larger contiguous pieces, and this is more... it does have the opening for where some of the wetlands are and some of the lawn and everything, but we're counting everything. And so, there's pieces. They met it in theory, but not in the practice that we've seen. And so, there may need to be some changes. But because of the uniqueness of this property, what we're attempting to accomplish and all that, it makes sense to move forward with our PUD that we have proposed before us. And since this is preliminary, there'll still be a final, but I think we're headed on the right track for this.
On that point, Mr. Rubel, can we make sure that at our next Planning Commission meeting, the issue of potentially modifying the PUD ordinance to address open spade is added as a discussion item? Good, okay. And then, the other thing I think was... I'm glad that Mr. Gearbaugh touched on this is that if people ask or question the validity or significance of the PUD, I think this is a perfect example to say, without the PUD, the stars wouldn't have lined and this wouldn't have come together the way it did. So, I think it proved extremely beneficial, and I'm glad that that policy change was made. Mr. CO?
I'm sorry, I was out of the room with necessity for a moment. Am I correct in my belief that you're now proposing two of these condominium buildings with units for developmental heat?
That's correct, yes.
And they'll both be supervised buildings?
Yes, they will.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Mr. Tar?
I won't try to match Ms. McClellan's eloquence, but I fully agree. This is just an outstanding project for our community on every level.
Good. If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Tar to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. Mr. CO?
This week, the mayor and I attended SEMCOG meeting over in Sterling Heights. They elected the new board for 2016, and I'm proud to announce that the mayor is, again, the alternate city delegate for the County of Washtenaw on the SEMCOG board. It was a most informative meeting. They talked about the demographics of the present generation in our SEMCOG region and how it's impacting not only the economics, but the overall... I mean, the housing and the needs for senior care and elder care and all that kind of stuff that's going to be challenging us here in the near future. And to some degree, the lack of folks to come behind them and pick up the remaining pieces, too.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. CO. And if council members are interested, I have SEMCOG's blueprints on stabilizing and sustainability regarding demographics through 2045, the SEMCOG annual budget, as well as the work plan for Southeast Michigan. You're welcome to read those. And then, I would also note, although I did share this with Councilwoman Mitchell when we had lunch on Friday, SEMCOG is hosting a workshop. It promises to be quite insightful regarding the future of automated vehicles and what impacts they'll have on local jurisdictions. That's going to be on Tuesday, the 25th of April, at the Weston in Southfield. I apologize. I don't remember the address off the top of my head. I believe it's from eight to one. I believe Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Campbell are already registered. If you wouldn't mind having Elle send out something to everyone on council. If there's... if anybody else would like to attend, we would encourage you to do so. I think it should be really interesting. Okay? Additional committee commissioner task force reports. How about reports and other announcements? And Mr. Gearbaugh, you added one regarding a calendar item?
Yeah, we've all been getting the calendar, you know, that staff provides, which is fine, except it's in a Word document, and some individuals have a problem reading it. I would like to actually see if we could do perhaps a Google Doc that not only we could access, but also the public could. Nothing to collude attachments and so forth, but just something that would be out there that's a little more user-friendly, and I don't know if we could do something like that, and that'd be... City Clerk?
We are working on our Minutes on Demand, having the calendar through there. So, you would be able to go to the calendar. The only problem with that is that we wouldn't be able to print it and send it to you, or we wouldn't be able to email you. We could, like the link you get to the Minutes on Demand we send out every time before a council meeting, we could send you the link to the calendar, but we're trying to get it to where everybody can see the same calendar.
Great.
Would that be...
Yeah, and what I was hoping was to be able to subscribe to the calendar so that it would automatically update my own calendars. I don't know if that's a possibility or not with us.
He is working with... Minutes on Demand is working with us, and I will check with him, and I will get back with you. But in the meantime, what we're going to do is we will scan that calendar in, so you will get it as a PDF. So, it will... you will be able to see it in its entirety.
Because I know the one thing that I've noticed is that with Ms. Korfman schedules our taxing board meetings, whatever, she sends it out, and it does work in my calendaring aspects, so I'm not sure which tool she's using. So, if we were consistent with however we're doing that, that probably would benefit...
Who is doing that?
Kathy Korfman.
Okay, I will check with her, too.
Do you want to update... you want to add this as a discussion item again in our next meeting?
I will. I can update it.
And report back?
Yep.
Very good. Any other reports or announcements? Ms. Mitchell?
I just want to let everybody know the Historic District Commission meeting has been moved to next Wednesday, to April 12th. And my subcommittee has been working on a mission statement, and we have submitted a first draft for the committee... for the commission to look at on April 12th. The Human Rights Ordinance subgroup has been meeting weekly. We're making progress in getting input from the city attorney on some legal questions. The autonomous vehicle half-day conference is Tuesday, April 25th, at the Weston Hotel, which is 1500 Town Center. That was the address you were looking for. So, I will attend and submit a report to everybody.
Question, as it relates to the Historic District Commission, is the meetings... Are the normal meetings now moved to the second Wednesday of the month? Or is this just a special accommodation for April?
I believe this is a special accommodation for April because we are also trying to fold in a training for the commission to... And that's tentatively scheduled later this month, so to accommodate the extra time.
And on the human rights stuff, remind me, I still have to get you contact information from my friend, former elected official who works for Equality Michigan.
I have a calendar item noted.
Good. Any other reports or announcements? Wastewater Treatment Plant update. I think you're taking the lead on that because Bob is absent this evening.
I know Mr. Schull is at a conference, so that's why he's not here. But I know as of last Friday, we had not received any additional odor complaints to date. And we also reached out to Tetra Tech. The... and then, one of the filters bearing had a problem with the bearing. It was offline shortly for a day, less than a day. I believe it was put back on the same... back online the same day. So, soon, anything that's similar to what has happened structurally in the past. So, we're still hopeful for that. And then, the last item, as I mentioned in my communique, and this was a follow-up from the discussion, the work session when Webster Environmental was here, in that the large odor scrubber, yeah, the do-all, the do-all had been turned off since two Fridays ago now. And then, also for the septic receiving, you may recall, we talked about that. And we'll be, I believe, sometime this week... I think I said in my communique sometime this week, it's either this week or next week now that we're going to start up slow with a couple of our septic haulers. And then, as long as we don't have any kinks in the system, then we would open up to our regular customer base, if you will, of septic haulers moving forward. At least for temporary, for a couple of reasons. One, right, to make sure that the equipment is working properly and also to determine if the odor... the amount of odor coming from that as well. So, I think that's it. Any questions?
I've got to say, I chuckled a little bit that we haven't received odor complaints subsequent to the odor scrubbers being turned off. But it's an interesting bit of data. And is there a tentative plan as to when we anticipate turning them back on? Or are they off sort of indefinitely at the moment?
Well, I don't have an answer. We'll try to see how... what kind of impact in one way or the other.
I'll be very interested in our next council meeting, assuming they're off for another two weeks and we have a month's worth of data if that standard is maintained and we don't receive any complaints. I guess that would be... that is obviously a good thing. Ms. Dillon, did you have a question or comment?
I did. I just wanted to ask about receiving. Are we... is Webster going to be onsite, or is there anybody that's going to be monitoring that to see if there's a smell at that point?
Not currently. They will come back in early, mid-July to do their second order testing.
So, is there a reason why we're not waiting until they're back onsite to test it at that point?
Well, as I said, one of the other reasons is we want to make sure that the equipment is operating properly. Part of it is that I believe the warranty, the year warranty since it was installed, I believe ends in July. So, we want to make sure that the equipment is working properly. And also, we want to... obviously, we can also tell as well if there is an increase in the odors. But yeah, that's... so, that's the two reasons is to make sure the equipment is working properly. So, at some point in the future, the assumption that we would continue. Because you may recall, part of the septic receiving station would be included in the odor scrubbing system. So, odor would be... any future odor would be captured, if you will, and treated. So, we want to make sure that the equipment is working properly and also to see what additional order, if that's in fact the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? No? We'll move on to the 2018 strategic plan. Mr. Campbell spoke about this briefly at the last meeting. Do you want to go ahead and touch on this a bit more?
So, just, again, very briefly, I mean, so you have it in your hands. And so, if you could take the next couple of weeks to look at it. And if you have any questions, you certainly can ask me prior to. Happy to answer those, to respond to those. But the thought is, like we've done in the past similarly, is that so now in two weeks, bring it back for an item to be discussed. And any questions, comments, any potential changes, adjustments to it, and then polish it up and then bring it forward. That most likely that first meeting in May, depending on the level of the magnitude of changes.
Very good. Okay, we'll proceed then without objection. Excellent. Last, but certainly not least, is city manager evaluation. And the clerk handed me... what do we have here? Is it four, three?
Yours, the current one, three.
Okay, do you want to pass those down? Then we'll get them back this way. There's the current template that we use. And then, Ms. Dillon, did you acquire the other three?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so there are copies for each of you. You should have received an email from Ms. Dillon last week. And I've had some conversations with staff, and Kirk Royal, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Subsequent to the city manager's 2016 review, you were also gathering examples of rubrics and forms other communities use. Is that correct? And I've also talked to Elle about this because the administrative assistant for the city manager is usually the one that distributes the forms, keeps them on file, and then compiles an Excel spreadsheet. So, what I would like to do, because I know that Ms. Dillon has some concerns and probably would suggest some tweaking. I don't need any of these, actually. I've got them.
Yes, this came about, I think, for the last two years during the evaluation process. We realized that there's questions on the city manager evaluation form that we use right now that are not pertinent to us. And so, I'm not sure that we're asking the right questions on it. So, we had discussed during those evaluations or shortly thereafter... I've got an odd number here I'm missing.
Here's what I'd like to propose, Ms. Dillon, if I may.
Yes.
Because the clerk has already been working on this and because Elle in the city manager's office has already been working on it, what I'd like to propose, and I apologize that I didn't speak to you about this before the meeting, I would like to empower, unless there's objection from the DA, it's the city manager... or, excuse me, the administrative assistant, the city clerk, and yourself to maybe meet a couple of times between now and, I'd like to say, maybe mid-May because we generally conduct the evaluation in June and take a look at these documents, make revisions to ours, and then maybe come... a look at these documents, make revisions to ours, and then maybe come back in mid-May. I think our second meeting in May is the, that calendar is so small.
Fifteenth?
The 15th, maybe come back by the 15th with an example of what we'd like to change the form to.
Okay.
And assuming that council members don't have any objections, then that's what we would use moving forward.
That was fine. The other issue that we had discussed, and I think that you know, is that when the fire department does their evaluations for the chief, all of the, the evaluations are submitting-
Compiled.
-and compiled, and then presented as one document versus a roundtable discussion.
Right. So actually, what we will probably end up doing this year, similar to what we do at the Fire Board, in fact, we're initiating the process for the chief's annual review this Wednesday, is we will hand out the form, and then there will be a finite deadline when you need to get it back to Elle and the city manager's office, so she can do up an Excel spreadsheet. Okay? So Teri, will you take the lead on getting with Elle and maybe scheduling some times to meet with Janet? Ms. Mitchell.
Just a quick question. I have three documents in front of me. Am I supposed to have four?
Are you missing City of Richmond? Because we have a lonely Richmond.
I have, okay, so I have City of Marshall, City of Richmond, and then City of Durand.
Okay, you're missing City of Celine, it sounds like.
You're missing, oh, yeah, I am, too, then. Right, so-
Yeah, if you, if you don't have four at the end of the meeting, get with either the clerk or Councilwoman Dillon, and we'll make sure you get all four.
All right, thanks.
Okay? Mr. Gearbaugh, did you have something, sir?
The only thing I thought, first, potential suggestion is maybe look at, and I don't know how Mr. Campbell will feel about this, but I know a lot of documents have like this type of self-evaluation, which gives us a little more idea or understanding of what you've accomplished, and that might be beneficial for us to have that type of thing, so if you want to consider that as part of the evaluation process, just so. It's something for us to work from when we're trying to evaluate, and it also usually helps us a little bit better than just the strategic plan.
So you'll get with Ms. Getzmann and Councilwoman Dillon? And if you can get something back for us again by the 14th, that would be terrific. Okay, thank you all. Anything else to be brought up under the discussion portion of the agenda? No, then we'll move on to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or name and address to the record.
Good evening. My name is William Smith, longtime Celine resident, 22 years in the last 17 years as a homeowner here in the city of Celine. And I want to thank you, Mayor, city council members and staff, for your time and your diligence. Obviously, it's a very exciting time to be here in Celine, a lot of great things happening. I'm also a part of Celine Main Street on the organization committee, and also a board member on the Celine Chamber. So I'm very committed and very involved in the community, and so I'd just like to encourage you to really put your heads together, so to speak, with the, the acceptance of the change plans and so forth for the hotel that's coming in. And I was encouraged by Mr. Gearbaugh's comments about the PUD with the willingness to consider the 40% or less than 40% open space, so that was encouraging to say, you know, that you would consider other options. I think one thing is a fiduciary responsibility, you know, that's huge for the city of Celine to have that additional tax and income revenue on a vacant property that's been set vacant, as Mayor Morrow said, for decades, so that was very encouraging. Plus, the Imagine Theater being available and the walkability back and forth is very encouraging, as well as just the attraction that it would bring to the city of Celine, which could bring in more residents, which then again is more tax revenue, more buildings, and also more businesses, as well as just, we have children in the schools, and so we have weekend events and things like that, tournaments for water polo and other things that go on. All those parents that drive in from Grand Rapids and other states and so forth, where do they go to stay? They have to go to Ann Arbor. Where do they spend their food? Where do they spend their money when they're here in Ann Arbor? So if they have an opportunity to stay here in Celine for those events, then that's where they're going to spend their money as well. So the businesses will benefit also, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for your comments. Additional citizen comments?
Mary Hess, history, 60 years as a city residence taxpayer, 22 years on city council. I was told a long time ago by my father, you act in haste, you get to repent at leisure. Mr. Gearbaugh has happened to be on the council during a problem with the rec center and also the disposal plant, and I appreciate his caution, and I think being chastised is wrong. The resolution, I believe, should have went through the city attorney. It has a part, whereas, the city council approval of the design of the hotel. Now, it appears that the gentleman has reduced the rooms significantly. The taxpayers are paying a big amount into the removing of the utilities. The taxpayers are the ones that had industrial land that we could have got taxes on, that was rezoned commercial, which became very valuable. Is it conceivable that the hotel's footprint plans on being a lot smaller and going up so that they can sell the adjacent side land for a small mint? Mr. Heisler decided to chastise the council because, oh, they had been in a hurry. And what they presented, we have to hurry right now, and again tonight, we have to hurry. We have had mistakes by hurrying, and on city council, I've been on a couple of those ends, too. But I think it's very important that you hurry, not for the developer. You proceed cautiously, covering all the Ts and dotting the Is for the taxpayer. And I still think the city attorney should have looked at this before it was pushed through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess, there's a lot there, but the city attorney has looked at this material and has looked at material every step of the way. So I just want to be clear on the, for the public record, what, what the fact is.
Am I being chastised?
You're not being chastised, I'm just stating a fact for the record. Mr. Rockwell.
I just want to say, there is, to Todd Campbell, there's a tree that needs to be taken care of in Brecken Park. You guys need to keep up on some of the parks that are around the area here. They're nice to walk through, they're nice to deal with. The other thing, dealing with this hotel thing, and I would at least like to see a bus system come into Celine. We've talked, and we've talked, and we've talked, for the ATA to come into Celine. I would at least like to see that, but due to the hotel, I think it's a very, very bad idea on all of you still. Every one of you, so.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Rockwell. And if you'd like to talk to staff about dead vegetation or trees in the park, you're more than welcome to do that, and we'll move expeditiously to get those issues taken care of. Other additional public comments? No, then please note our upcoming meetings will be on the 17th and then 24th. The 24th is a tentative regarding the budget, so we'll know after our meeting on the 17th whether that's necessary, and then our next regular meeting will be on May 1st. There are no absences this evening, so we will, the chair will now consider a motion to adjourn at 9:37 PM.
So moved.
Moved by CEO, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.